I call to order the Gladstone City Council work session for Tuesday, February 28th at 6:31 PM. The City of Gladstone is abiding by guidelines set forth in the House Bill 2560, which requires the governing body of the public body, to the extent reasonably possible, to make all meetings accessible remotely through technological means. Therefore, this meeting will be open to the public, both in person and virtually using the Zoom platform. The Zoom access instructions can be found on the meeting agenda. Members of the City Council, staff, and the public all have access to this call. Council work sessions generally do not include public participation or business from the audience. Tonight's agenda includes the 2022 Gladstone Library Report, an educational session we're calling Utilities 101 regarding the city's utilities billing system, including an overview of Oak Lodge Water Services, and an educational session regarding our Parks Department budget. Tammy, will you call the role, please?
Counselor Huckabee, present. Counselor Alexander?
Yes.
Counselor Riekel?
Present.
Counselor Roberts?
Here.
Counselor Garlington? Mayor Milch?
Present. Let's stand for the flag salute, please. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, item one on our work session is the 2022 Gladstone Library Report.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. I'm going to have our library manager Mitzi Olson and the project manager for the new Gladstone Library, Jason Varga, come up, and they have a presentation for you.
Is that working?
Good evening, Mayor Milch, councilors and city administrator Betts. Thank you for the opportunity to provide an update concerning the Gladstone Library. I am Mitzi Olson, Library Director of the Gladstone and Oak Lodge Libraries. Also with us today is Jason Vargas, project manager for the new Gladstone Library. Bear with me just a minute here while we get the next slide.
We tested it before. I will, you'll have to tell me.
Okay, sure. Yeah, happy to do that. Today I'll be sharing information on the library timeline and statistics, how the library is doing, and some of our program highlights. Jason will then provide an update on the ongoing library project. Next slide, please. As you may recall, the City of Gladstone and Clackamas County entered into an agreement for the county to assume operation of the Gladstone Library beginning December 2019, and to build a new library in Gladstone. Before I talk about statistics, let me provide some background information. We had just begun integrating staff and operations when the pandemic forced us to close to the public on March 18th, 2020. Fiscal year 1920 represents post-merger and the start of the pandemic. Fiscal year 2021 shows the biggest impact of the pandemic as we finally opened our doors to invite patrons back into the building on May 10th, 2021. While fiscal year 2122 shows some improvement, we are clearly still dealing with COVID's lasting effects. During shutdown, circulation, door count, and internet usage fell, while use of electronic materials and seat checkouts increased. In the most recent fiscal year 2122, circulation, door count, and internet sessions rose, but not to pre-pandemic levels. Other measures stabilized as expected. The return to in-person programming was gradual. Storytime transitioned from weekly Zoom to weekly in-person sessions. We are back to offering monthly adult craft classes, which are well-attended. We have continued the popular take-and-make-kids-craft as a monthly year-round offering. Rock Readers Book Club continues meeting virtually and sometimes in person. The library makes the materials available and promotes the program to other library patrons. The library also participated in a number of community events, including the Gladstone Nature Park Butterfly Garden Grand Opening, the Gladstone Nature Park Arbor Day event, and the Gladstone Community Festival. At these events, we offered free garden seeds, children's books, and a craft. We continued our collaboration with Friends of the Gladstone Nature Park and the Gladstone Library Foundation on seasonal story walk displays. The stories and activities are offered in English and Spanish. Seeds for Sharing is a volunteer-run program supported by the Gladstone Foundation. We worked with the Gladstone Foundation to solicit seed donations from multiple sources to expand our offering. We are excited that our existing programs have been so successful and are expanding our offerings to include additional storytime sessions in both English and Spanish, gardening classes, music sessions, and a collaborative senior center speaker series in coming months. Now I'm going to turn it over to Jason, who will give us an update on the Gladstone Library building project.
All right, thanks, Mitzi. As you mentioned, I'm Jason Varga. I'm the project manager for the Gladstone and Oak Lodge community projects. So today, it's been slow, but we're making, I feel like we're making some good progress, and we're getting closer to hopefully starting construction very soon. So today what I'd like to go through is our schedule, the design, some cost and funding updates, and then what are the next steps to get to that point? So, let's see here. So right now, this is our current timeline where we've been done with the design. We finished that in summer of 2022. And we've kind of been in a holding pattern with the updated agreement to just wait to see if costs and everything kind of settled down, because it was pretty crazy last year. Since then, we have, as you have all have probably noticed, we've, the old city hall no longer exists, and it's just a field over there. So we were able to do that and didn't really have any issues. That was pretty straightforward. The next step that we are currently working on is updating our project budget. PNC, who is our general contractor for the project, they are working on putting a GMP, a Guaranteed Maximum Price Proposal, together. So that's the step we're currently in. And the idea with that is we'll have that GMP, we'll have our updated budget, we'll go back to the board of commissioners with those numbers. And at that time, we would look for formal approval from them to proceed with the project. And if everything goes well, we would look at starting construction probably early this summer. So, and it's about, it's about maybe 11-month duration, so just under a year it would take to build it. So this picture here is, if you took the roof off of the library, this is what you would see looking down on it. And the bottom right is the main entrance into it, coming off of Dartmouth. And as you come in, and the bottom left is the teens area. In that middle section is the main collection. Staff area is to the right. And then at the very top there, the top left is the children's area. And the top right is a community room for the, to be used for the community. And then kind of in the middle on the left, there is a open courtyard that borders the fire department. Any questions on that? Oh, and sorry, I should go over some of the features. It's a structural steel frame. What you see is a mixture of concrete flooring and carpeting. We have a VRF, which is Variable Refrigerant Flow Heating and Cooling System, energy-efficient LED lighting, low-flow plumbing fixtures. We'll have some rooftop solar panels. The areas I mentioned before, we'll have, still have the seed library, be of space for the friends, and as I mentioned before, courtyard and community room. So here, this next slide is just a view as kind of looking from the top as you would first enter. And straight ahead of you would be the teen area, and then you're kind of looking at that courtyard in the middle. This is another view of the teen area. And then to the right is just the aisle way that's between the courtyard and the main collection. Nice little seating area. And then this is in the children's area. This is a casework that was built out, little area for kids to kind of play around and and lay down and have some fun. So that green is like, it's like a felt with some cushioning behind it that would be in there. And then the rest is just wood paneling. This is just to kind of show some of the different materials we're using on the outside. That first one, the metal panels, there's some HVAC equipment up on the roof. So the screen, we have to screen those off so people don't see it. That'd be some metal panels. The sunscreen there, it's these perforated aluminum pieces that are kind of bent. It's really hard to see on this. But what it is, is just aluminum, and they're kind of bent at angles. And they're just, they're not actually a lot of times connected to each other, but it's just hard. You might be able to see in a different view here what it looks like. But that was what we've, we've ended up with for a sunscreen. That screen goes around the corner, as you see, and it's just mostly to prevent a lot of sun glare into the building itself. We'll have a lot of storefront, a lot of glass for natural light to come in. And then the siding is just fiber cement board painted. This is another view, kind of from that corner of Dartmouth and Portland. You'll see the signage for Gladstone Library right at the bottom of the screen. They'll have the bike racks in front there and some seating right outside the front door. And then this is a view from Dartmouth. This would be the, an entrance to the community room. So that's a room that can be used, obviously, after hours when the library isn't necessarily open for operations. That would be open to the community for use. And then this is looking from the fire department. What you're looking at, that lower light gray box is the trash enclosure that we will share with the fire department. And then the wall behind that is our screen from our courtyard, where you see the trees poking out. That's kind of where the courtyard starts, and then it's really the backside of that teens area is, is where the wall extends out to the street. And this is a view of the courtyard. So we'll have some benches down there at the end, and we'll use some boulders for sitting. And then that circular thing, we'll get into it. That's an idea for potential, like, public art piece that we are looking into. So speaking of public art, we had a subcommittee for the task force that was part of this project help pick out like themes and what they, what they thought the public art should, the theme it should follow. And they came up with gather and grow, curiosity, exploration, and discovery. So we're going to use that. We will soon be putting together RFP, but that's the theme we're going for. And these pictures, we're not necessarily doing any of these. These are just examples of, of art for that. So for public art, we have a total of about 80,000 in our budget. And we have three sites that we thought were a priority to, to have public art. The first one is at the main entry. Where you see that boulder scene right now, we could, we're looking at maybe some kind of sculpture, some, something three-dimensional that we could put in place of that. Site number two was that, kind of those circular pieces, what we were thinking there is, it would be like a metal band, and we could put some kind of message or wording in that band or whatever out there. And then site number three is, this is kind of the main collection area. There's a long section of wall above the shelving, and we thought that might be a good spot, too, to have some, maybe even a three-dimensional piece off that wall, so. All right, budget and estimates. So what you're seeing here was, the November estimate was the original budget we had that the county approved before prices went up, and that was at 7 million. The April estimate was our revised estimate after design was complete. We went back and reestimated, and it had jumped up to 9.4 million total with, I mean, it's all construction that it went up. So the difference is 2.4 million dollars. And at the January 26th board meeting this year, that was where the discussion was for them to use general funds to fund that gap. So what we're showing, 2.4 is, as you can see, is based off an April estimate, so it's almost a year old. So that's not necessarily an accurate number, but it's the best number we had to go with at the time. So, I mean, we're hoping that it's, it's in that same range. But we're going through that process right now, so it shouldn't be too long before we have an updated number. Funding so far, so this has changed a bit from even last November. We've got the state ARPA funds that we've, we've had for a while, for half a million. We have the county ARPA funds. They originally approved 200,000, and then back in September, I think it was, they had allotted another 6 million from county ARPA funds for Gladstone Library. Beginning fund balance for Gladstone Library of 0.3 million. And then this county general fund, we've got 2.4, but that's a number that depending on what the final cost is, that number will either go up or down. So what's next? So we are looking to, I actually think in the next week, we might be turning in our, our plans for permit approval. So that's right around the corner. We are working on our GMP proposal with PNC Construction. That probably won't be too far down the road. They're in the process of bidding it out right now. And then, like I said, we'll have, we'll go to the board. Once we get all those numbers updated, we'll go to the board for formal approval. And also in that same timeframe, we'll be developing, submitting RFP for public art opportunities. And we're working with Clackamas Arts Alliance to, they're helping us out with that. And then assuming we get permit approval and budget approval, we see us starting construction in early this summer and finishing in, in spring of next year. Any questions?
Councilors, do you have questions?
I do.
Counselor Huckabee?
Okay, I have a couple, so bear with me. I am seeing a lot of trees along Portland and Dartmouth. Are we really going to put trees in there?
Yes, that's the plan. I know we took out, I think we took out some of them just because of the demo of the building. We really couldn't save them. They were too close to the building. But yeah, there is plan to have. I feel like we're putting them back close to where they were before, just different trees, obviously.
Different trees, okay. Great. The second question is, I'm really interested in the RFP for art. And how widespread that RFP is going to be so all demographics have an opportunity to participate in that RFP?
Yeah, I haven't gotten into the details. I'm working with Clackamas Arts, and they, I think they have a pretty good base of artists that they do calls out to around the whole area. I mean, we would like to focus for local artists if we could, but we'll have to see what, what comes out of it. But the idea, it'd be great if we could get some very local artists to put proposals in.
Excellent, thank you. Last question. So I'm seeing on the budget and estimates, there's a difference, obviously, November and April, so it will change, of 2.4 million, total of 9.4 right now. Back when Clackamas County approved to use their general funds, that article stated 8.1 million dollars they approved. Right?
So that was, yeah, that was total, sorry. That was Oak Lodge and Gladstone Libraries combined.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, that's it.
Okay.
You guys have a plan in place if it goes over? I mean, hopefully, construction, you know, labor not goes, and the supplies go down, but if it goes over, what?
Yeah.
At that meeting, I think Mark Scholl opened his wallet and said it might have to come from here. I mean, you guys got a plan?
I mean, we've, even to this point, we've tried to value engineer as much as we could out of this building with, and still give it, you know, a feel of a building that people will want to come to. I feel like we've taken as much out as, as we can. I mean, a lot, I don't know how familiar all of you are, but when we were early on in design, in like schematic design, we had, originally this building was a CLT structure. That sunscreen was much bigger. We actually had a screen at, at street level, too. We've modified the heating and cooling system to try to cut as much as we can out. I really feel like there's not a lot we can take out without dramatic, you know, effects to the way it looks, so. We've been in constant contact with PNC throughout. We're seeing things are stabilizing. I'm not, obviously inflation is, is there, and it's not, hasn't gone the other way. So I'm hoping that it's, it's somewhat close, but it's, it's hard to know. It's been really hard, too. Because, I mean, when we were doing these estimates, it felt like every four months, it was something new was going way up in price, so.
If it ran over, that would be your plan, take something out some way from life?
I mean, yeah, I don't, I don't have a, I can't say I have a great answer on that right now, what we would do. I mean, we'd have to obviously look at that. I'm just not sure what that would be with it, so. Yeah.
Counselor Riekel, do you have any questions? She's indicating no. Counselor Roberts?
No.
Well, I appreciate the clarification that you've broken down this between the two different branches. You're showing us the figures for Gladstone.
Yes, yes.
Obviously, the other branch, there's still some decisions to make up there about things. But I'm glad that we have a, a plan in place, some designs in place.
Yeah.
I think you have been through a design review process here in Gladstone with our planning commission. So when you talk about permitting now, this is through the county then for one or both of these buildings? Do you expect it to do it at the same time, different?
We're, we're planning on doing Gladstone first, because design's done. There's no reason we can't turn in for permit approval. The design's not quite complete for Oak Lodge. They're in the final phase. But they'll be, it'll be a few more months before they're 100% complete, so.
Okay, and I confess, that's sort of the answer I was looking for, that to reassure the citizens, we're not, at this point, waiting for a uniform schedule between both. If we are ready, you can, you can proceed to some next steps here in Gladstone as you finalize plans for the Oak Lodge.
Yeah, I mean, ultimately, it's the board's decision, but yeah, we aren't, we're not necessarily waiting to, for Oak Lodge to get done. We're going to put that out there, and it's up to them what they would like to do when they see those numbers.
Thank you so much. Any other questions from staff?
I just, the biggest takeaway for me is they're going to start construction this summer. I'm very excited.
Yes. All right. Thank you both for coming and sharing tonight, keeping us informed.
Thanks.
All right, we have four new councilors this year. We will be adding one more appointed new counselor, and so we need a lot of education. So tonight, we have a couple of education settings coming up that'll really help us to get a deeper understanding of some of the important financial issues related to the city. The first one, the next item on our agenda is Utilities 101 Educational Setting. And again, I'll have our city administrator introduce this item.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, we're, we're going on a journey. And tonight, we're going to start with our friends from Oak Lodge Water Services. But we thought, before they do their presentation, there's some complexities in Gladstone when it comes to water, sewer, stormwater, that we wanted to give the council and the public an overview of how our system operates. So our finance consultant has prepared a PowerPoint. We do have printed copies for you after tonight, if you'd like to take them with you. But we're going to pull this up, and Kathy's going to walk you through the city's utilities.
Thank you, Jackie. All right, so our intent tonight is to inform the city council on the provision of utility services to our residents. The city residents are billed for water, sewer, and stormwater services on a monthly basis. The bills provide detail on the components of each service provided. Water is split between base rates and consumption, and sewer is split between treatment and collection, and stormwater is a single flat charge. Graphics illustrate manual comparison on the billing, along with an explanation of the 5% right-of-way fee. And the message center helps us communicate to the residents on various items of interest, such as anticipated rate changes, or we've even put much, a lot of public community-type information out on there also. And then pertinent information on billing and payment options are also included on the backside of the bill. So I feel we've really tried to communicate as much as possible on the monthly bills for people to be able to take advantage of and educate themselves. So, oops, I'm terrible about this. Oh, now we went too far. There we go. Water is billed out to about 3,300 customers, covering residential and commercial accounts within the city. The base rates vary depending upon the size of the water meter, with residential at 3121 per month base rate being the majority of meters. Water is provided through the joint venture partnership that formed North Clackamas County Water Commission. The partners of NCCWC are Oak Lodge Water District at 42%, Sunrise Water at 48%, and then the city at 10%. NCCWC will be providing an overview of the commission at your April 25th city council meeting. The bulk water charge was implemented January 1 of 2020 to encourage water conservation and charges based on actual consumption. The city bills in CCFs, a cost per cubic foot, which equals 748 gallons of water to one CCF. The rates are assessed at three different levels of usage and increase along with the amount of usage. Each rate includes the NCCWC treatment rate, which is currently at 0.7929 per CCF. The balance of the charges cover the cost of dispersment of water to the customer, water lines, meter installations, operations, and maintenance, et cetera. NCC notifies the city of cost increases to the treatment rate, which are passed through to the customer on July 1st of each year. Increases to the city dispersment rate, both the base rate and the bulk water rate, are processed on January 1st of each year. The city has held that increase to 4% since January 2021 to reflect cost of living increases to operations and maintenance. The upcoming biennial budget for fiscal years '24 and '25 will also be estimated at that amount of increase of 4%.
And just to add one more thing, a couple of years prior to that, And just to add one more thing, a couple of years prior to that, we had larger percentage increases to sort of get caught up with where we felt we need to be. But our commitment at that point was to stick with inflation level increases going forward, and that's what we've managed to do, or actually a little bit less than the way some inflation is calculated.
For this year, yes. And now on to sewer. Sewer also has two components, one being collection and one being treatment. Collection is provided by the city from the home to city boundaries, then transferred to either Wes Water Environmental Services or OLWS, Oak Lodge Water Services Authority, which transmits to their respective treatment plants for processing. City collection rates will increase, as they say, 4% for the next two fiscal years on January 1. Wes and OLWS rates increase on July 1 of each year, as determined by the respective agencies. The city then passes those increases through to the customer. Wes, and a description of it. It sewer charges are billed on an equivalent dwelling unit, EDUs, as what they're referred to as, basis as determined at the time of construction permitting based on the building usage. Single-family residents are almost always billed at one EDU. The majority of accounts within the city fall under the West sewer boundaries. 3,981 EDUs from a total of 2,633 residential, multifamily, and commercial customers. Along with the city collection charge of 3489 per EDU, customers also pay the West charge of 2790 per EDU for treatment. The West treatment plant is very close to the Gladstone boundary, so no further collection charges are assessed on these accounts by Wes. Water Environmental Services will be making a presentation to council at your March 28 work session. The Oak Lodge Water System customer base consists of 813 EDUs from 666 residential customers. There are no commercial accounts in the crossover area with OLWS. Again, customers pay the city collection charge of 3489 per month. The OLWS treatment plant is a significant distance away from our boundaries, so customers also pay a collection charge combined with the treatment charge of 5836 per month. Each spring, the city calculates the aggregate winter four-month average of water use for each OLWS account, and then pays a calculated amount to OLWS for treatment services per fiscal year. Oak Lodge Water Services are here with us tonight to provide further information on their services. And then our final charge is the stormwater. Stormwater billing was implemented in fiscal year 2017-18 to maintain and improve the city stormwater system. Residential accounts are based on a 3,000 square foot impermeable surface and charge 1428 per month. Commercial accounts are calculated on the total impermeable surface divided by 3,000 square foot multiplied by 1428 per month. Maintenance and improvements to the stormwater system keep surface water from flowing into the sewer system, protects the sewer lines from backups and overflows into the environment, including our rivers and streams. So that recaps the foundation of our utility billing structure within the city, strictly talking billing structure. Are there any questions at this time?
Counselors, Counselor Roberts? Counselor Riechel, do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions, but thank you for simplifying it to the point where I can actually understand it.
I think we all echo that. Counselor Alexander?
I do appreciate it.
My only question is, the equivalent dwelling units, there are more of them total than there are actual dwelling units. What are the circumstances under which an account is billed, is considered to be more than one? Is this primarily commercial?
Largely commercial, but also to multifamily duplexes would be two dwelling units. If you have apartment complexes, it will be a dwelling unit per apartment, basically. So if you have 50 units within the apartment complex, it would be 50 EDUs on that, but it would only account for one account.
Okay.
Yes.
I remember the difference on the square footage of impermeable services, services for the stormwater, but I didn't know it was similar for the other services as well.
Yes.
All right.
Okay. Thank you, Kathy. So as we mentioned at the beginning, is this is a journey and we have Water Environmental Services, Wes. We have Oak Lodge Water Services Authority, who's going to present who they are and what they do tonight. And then we also have North Clackamas Water Commission that is coming in April to talk about who they are and what they do. So we're very pleased to have Sarah Jo Chaplin, who's the General Manager of Oak Lodge Water Services Authority, and their District Engineer Brad Albert, that also have a presentation for you that we will make available at the end of tonight's work session.
So come forward and make sure the button is pressed, so the mic is on and and aiming toward your mouth, so we can all hear you clearly and that those who are watching on remote can hear you. Thanks, Sarah.
Honorable Mayor Milch, city counselors, and city manager Bets, thank you very much for welcoming us here this evening. We're very excited to be here. We, I wanted to also introduce you to Heidi Bullock, who is one of our directors. She was not able to make it here for the whole meeting. I'm not sure if she's online at the moment. Heidi, if you wanted to introduce yourself?
Yes, hello. Good evening, everyone. I'm Heidi Bullock. I'm one of the board members of the Oak Lodge Water Services, and I'm really happy to be here. I started, I planned to be in person, but I had a sick family member, so it's best I'm home. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Both Brad and I had the pleasure of working for city council, for city councils for a city earlier on in our career. And it's always very interesting when you look at what is a district versus what is a city. So a district tends to be just one or two services, as opposed to a city that may offer many more services than that. And typically with a city, you either offer the services directly or you contract for those services, and the mix is different, the blend is different for every city. And so the purpose for us here this evening is to introduce you to Oak Lodge Water Services. We're one of your long-term partners for helping to deliver services within your city. And we also wanted to talk about the partnership between the city and of Gladstone and us. It was interesting when I looked at the fact that the city of Gladstone had started in 1889, and we were originally a water district and a sanitary district, both about 100 years old. But the city of Gladstone looks like it is older than we were in terms of starting, but we have been in partnership for a very a long time over those years. When you look at a district, there are several different kinds of districts, but the overarching is a district. So one kind is the kind that Wes is with the county, and they're basically a department of the county, but they are also a district. They have focused services that they offer. Another kind of a district is an authority where the surrounding partners in the county have agreed that we would continue to offer those services into the future. And we recently moved from being a a district to an authority, which is a kind of a district. But we thought it would be easier for everyone if we just kept the same letters, OLWS, Oak Lodge Water Services. So we are both a special district, but we are an authority, a kind of a special district. When you look at the services that we provide, it is clear from our commitments that we have both a public health aspect and a protecting the environment aspect, and also a serving our customers aspect. So our commitments are, we protect the public health, we provide excellent customer service, we make smart investments and work to keep rates affordable, and we also keep local streams and rivers clean. We offer three essential services, but within Gladstone, one of the services that we offer is one that you provide yourselves. So our three essential services are providing safe and reliable drinking water. The next is wastewater collected from homes and businesses. And the third is the one that your city does for itself, which is protecting the water quality of your local streams and rivers, looking after your stormwater. So we thought we'd give you kind of a snapshot of the services that we offer. We have our water treatment plant. We are a partner with the North Clackamas Water Commission, North County Clackamas Water Commission, who you'll be seeing later on. But on our water side, we have 100 miles of water pipe. We have roughly the same amount, 100 miles of sewer pipe. You'll notice for our wastewater treatment plant that we process 1.5 billion gallons annually, and we, part of which is the city of, part of the city of Gladstone's wastewater. We also have 773 fire hydrants, which might not be the first thing that you think about with water services, but is very important for emergency services. We, districts like cities have an elected board, and I wanted to introduce you to our board. They serve four-year terms. They volunteer, just like you do, to serve your community. Susan Keel is our chair. Kevin Williams is our vice chair, Paul Gornick treasurer, Heidi Bullock is a director, and as is Ginny Van Lu, and they have to live within the district, just like you do, in order to serve your city. And I would now like to hand the next section over to Brad, who's our district engineer, Brad Alvin.
Good evening. Thank you for having us here, and I will just continue on. Just wanted to give you kind of a little overview of the staff that we have at OLWS. OLWS is regulated by the Oregon Department of Environmental Quality, or DEQ, and the Oregon Health Authority. So DEQ regulates our wastewater and surface water or stormwater, and Oregon Health Authority is our drinking water side. So we have two agencies that we report to and oversee us, and we have certified staff on both sides. So we need certified staff for our wastewater treatment plant and collection system. And we also need certified staff for our drinking water distribution system. So this is kind of a rough overview of our service area. To the north, we are about Milwaukee, and to the south, we have you folks here in Gladstone as our neighbors. And we have unincorporated Clackamas County there to the east and the Willamette River on the west side. So we have in our service area approximately 29,000 people that we service. Wastewater, drinking water, and stormwater, too. So this gives you a little bit different view of our area. The color coding there is our wastewater basins, that we call them. And so you can see the area on the south, that kind of lime green area south of the dark line is the Gladstone service area, and I can get into that more later in this. We wanted to point out the Valley View reservoirs that are adjacent to Gladstone. It's located at 16711 Southeast Valley View Road. We have a few inter ties, OLWS does, with Gladstone as part of the NCCWC. We were able to partner with Gladstone when we had the wildfires in 2020 and the ice storm in 2021. We were fortunate enough to be able to supply drinking water and help help Gladstone out, and I know that Gladstone would do the same for us. So we have, we have a great partnership with with you folks here, and we, we do really appreciate that. On the wastewater side, up in the top left, it's kind of the northwest, is our wastewater treatment plant. It may be hard to see, but the highlighted yellow line is our trunk main that runs southeast all the way down to what we see in the large circled area as lift station six on Glen Echo Avenue. And the Gladstone area, the wastewater collection system flows to lift station six. And then that is pumped through trunk A, as it's labeled there on the map, and there's some red arrows to the northwest, through lift station two, and then all the way to our wastewater treatment plant. So those trunk mains are 30 inches and 24 inches of trunk main that all of the wastewater service area for Gladstone flows through our service area to the wastewater treatment plant. So we wanted to, and that's approximately 650 wastewater customers, I believe. It was 666, but we're very, that's about the amount of customers. So I just wanted to illustrate how far that wastewater travels, you know, through the system to be treated.
And just to clarify here, then, going back to the presentation we had earlier, this long distance of travel through these long trunk lines is part of the reason why the cost of providing this service is higher to the Gladstone residents who are in your district rather than those who are in the the West district for the same services. Is that correct? You want to add a little more to, of an explanation for for that?
So part of it is the cost of providing the service. So with wastewater service, it's usually gravity-fed, but then it has to be boosted through pump stations. And so everyone in our district helps pay for the pump stations. Part of the cost is we have that collection system that needs to be paid for, just as the city of Gladstone has a collection system that needs to be paid for. And so Gladstone customers that we're serving are paying for our work to get it to the treatment plant, plus the work of your folks in the city. And you'll usually see wastewater treatment plants are always down by the river because that's the lowest spot, and then they put the treated water into the river. There's a lot that goes on with treatment and moving it that most people don't think about because the pipes are buried and you just don't see them every day, unless something has gone wrong with the pipe and it needs to be repaired.
Thank you.
Welcome.
We just thought we'd provide a picture, not really glamorous, of our lift stations, you know, but that is lift station six that serves the Gladstone service area. And we are in the process of not maintaining, but upgrading our lift stations throughout our district. And so lift station six is, will be upgraded in the next couple of years there. Just to, did you have some?
I was just gonna say, and part of the upgrades is based upon the emergencies that all of us in Clackamas County have faced, energy redundancy, and being able to continue functioning during whatever emergency it is, has become even more important.
Here's a high-level view of our wastewater treatment plant. We're right next to Railroad Trussell, as you can see there on the north side. Those are our clarifiers there to help treat the wastewater. And we're on, we're at 13750 Southeast Renton Avenue in Oak Grove, near River Villa Park. Our wastewater treatment plant went through a significant upgrade in 2012 and to serve our 29,000 customers. At that time, I believe the treatment plant was 50 years old, roughly, before we upgraded it. And so our average daily treatment is 2.8 million gallons per day. And it is built out to serve our community even during growth. Skip over slide. Nope. And we do encourage, you know, wastewater treatment plant tours. If anybody wants to come and, and see how everything operates, it's actually a very educational tour. There's a lot of things that, you know, even as an engineer, you know, seeing one or two for the first time is actually, I wouldn't say exciting, but it's very interesting, educational to see what, how much process goes through when it comes in to when it is released back into the, to the river. It's, it's pretty amazing.
We have a lot of the local schools come for tours of the plant and will be starting that back up again. But we are happy to show anyone who wants to what their rates are going towards in terms of contributing the services for all of our customers.
And we really appreciate being able to be before you all this evening and letting us take the time to discuss our service area and what we do. And we'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you. I, I interrupted with a couple of questions of my own, but I'll give the other councillors an opportunity to. Councillor Huckabee?
I don't have any questions. Just thank you for putting this together. I know our community has had a lot of questions about billing lately, and so it's nice to see where this is all going. Thank you.
Same thing, thank you. I think I'm just gonna come take the tour and actually see what, what goes on there.
Yeah, that's great.
Thank you.
Much like Council Alexander, I think I'd also be interested in taking that tour at some point. I wanted to know what goes into the upgrade of the lift station, like you were talking about.
A lot of times we, sometimes the lift stations are old, so they have a wet well in them. And sometimes they're small. Sometimes we can increase the size of the wet well. A lot of times we remove and replace the pumps. And they're either upgrade the size of the pump with the community growth that we see. And you know, the telemetry or the electronics are old, and so a lot of the panels need to be upgraded. We also assess backup generators and that sort of thing, redundancy. So we make sure that, you know, they're, they can be up and running in different situations. So there, there's a lot that goes in, into those. And, and just, we normally, you know, do a lot of wear and tear, mechanical maintenance on them all the time. But sometimes it's just, we just need to almost tear them down and, and start over again. They do get a lot of use.
Yeah.
And they get a lot of wear and tear on those. It's not something that you think about, but there's a lot of flow going through each one of those daily. So to keep those running is another feat in itself.
Sure, thank you.
Yeah.
Councillor Rieckel, do you have any questions?
Don't have any questions, but again, just want to echo, thank you so much for taking the time and, and coming to explain all of this to us so that we have a better understanding. Thank you.
Thank you.
One other question for me. We hear a lot about smart technology today in all phases of, of industry and other things. I've, I've read about sensors in sewer systems and water systems that monitor flows and are able to divert in circumstances. Is that the kind of technology that's involved in some of these upgrades, too? Has that been part of it already?
Some of the upgrades are, like saying, the lift stations are variable speed pumps. So they can, they can sense the flow coming in and then be able to either ramp up the speed or slow down the speed so they're not using quite as much energy. And we can keep it more of a constant rate through the pipes, rather than filling up, the old style is filling up the wet well. It's triggering the pump to kick on. And then you have all of the wastewater going through the pipe at once. And if you have all those lift stations doing that at the same time, sometimes it can compromise the trunk mains or other parts of the system. So that's a portion of the upgrade, too. And we have, we call a SCADA system or telemetry that we can keep an eye on all of these different things that happen and be able to see what's going on in our system and be able to adjust.
Great, great. So that's, there's some efficiency to that and probably environmental protection as well, because I would imagine overflows or other things can be caused by some of the old way that it was done.
It can be, and that's our first and foremost defense that we don't want to have happen.
Right. You gave the address of your wastewater treatment facility. And when I drive on McLaughlin, I pass a big building near the river. Is that the same building with a different address, or is that a separate facility?
Oh, is that the Kellogg Treatment Plant?
Yes.
In Milwaukee?
Yes.
That's a different facility.
Okay. All right, thank you for that clarification, because that's the one that we see most often because we travel McLaughlin more frequently. You are hidden a little ways into Oak Grove.
Yes.
Not so much in the public view. So, okay, good to know.
Yeah.
And like everything else, the pipes are all underground. We take it all for granted, but when we hear from the people who make it happen, we are really appreciative of what goes on that we don't see, but that you understand and enable for us. So thank you on behalf of the citizens and on behalf of the council for coming and educating us tonight. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much, and we very much appreciate the very long working relationship we have with the city of Gladstone through the good times and the emergency times. Thank you.
Darren, I have a question for you. They referenced a couple of water tanks that are part of their system, so to speak. I know we have some water tanks in Gladstone. Are they the same ones or are there some different sets of them? Just to inform us on that.
No, they're separate from that. Ours are on Webster, and then the third tank is up on Kirkwood.
Okay. So total of about five or six altogether then between the two systems, but roughly the same area, because they have to be generally the same altitude or whatever the proper term is.
Yeah, correct. So theirs are within Gladstone. They're completely their tanks. We don't maintain and we don't do anything with them. We have three tanks locally that are ours that we maintain. But we can draw off, like they mentioned, with the enter ties in emergency situations when needed.
Very good. I'm glad we have that cooperation going on. Thank you so much. Thanks for that clarification, Darren. All right, item three on our agenda is another educational session, this time related to the, the budget for our Parks Department. Kathy Brucker, again, will help us with that one, as well as Darren Canaparoli, because Public Works is involved with the maintenance and of our parks. And we are grateful that tonight we have members of the Parks Board here with us. Thank you. You two are dismissed, for sure. You don't need to learn everything there is about this city. And thank you to the Parks Board members for, for being with us from the beginning. I hope you learned as much as we did. And Bruce, would you mind introducing the folks who are here tonight so that we know who you are before we start?
Yeah, absolutely. I've lived here for a long time. We have David Michaels over here and Ellen Fitt. I mean, the three, three of us. Nancy, you here?
Nancy's on Zoom.
Okay, Nancy, I stayed on Zoom. And we appointed a new member at our last meeting. Kate, welcome. All right. You are, okay. I, I knew there was one or two. And your name?
Kim.
Kim, hi. Very nice to meet you. Been nice to meet you both and nice to make the acquaintance with, with all of you as a, an advisory board to us. Okay, I guess we have another presentation coming up, and I will turn it over to staff. This happens to be a year in which we will be preparing a new city budget all across the board, not just for parks, but for everything. And so tonight's session will be a very helpful introduction to the process of how a general fund portion of the budget works. And so we appreciate getting this little intro into it on a very specific part of our city services and programs. And that should help us as we move forward.
Okay, so yes, thank you, Mayor. And again, we have our finance consultant that's gonna do a presentation, and away we go.
Hi, thank you very much. This presentation is intended to inform the City Council and the Parks Board on the spending structure for the Parks Department. The Parks Department resides within the general fund, is funded by some park dedicated revenues. Approximately 39% is what the budgeted amount is, with a general fund subsidy of 61% over and above to meet budget allocations. Always seems to start off slow, doesn't it? There we go. Oh, one, two, three. There we go. Funding sources. The funding sources are the revenues that are dedicated to Parks operations. Maintenance and improvements are as follows. System development charges. These were implemented in fiscal year 2018-19. And Parks has a balance currently of $282,657 of restricted system development charges available for use on new or expanded development based on Oregon revised statutes. With little growth capacity within the city, the balance of these funds has remained minimal for such infrastructure expansion. Funds are collected at the time of project construction. They're based on the ESTC methodology as approved and adopted by the City Council, which was approximately 2017, when that methodology was approved. The funds can only be used for projects that are identified within the master plan, also completed in 2017, and only up to the amount determined to be impacted by new construction. West Water Environmental Services, again, implemented the Good Neighbor Grant in FY 2019-20 to provide funds for certain improvements. The city has received $205,000 within the past four years. Received roughly is $50,000 the first two years, and then there was an indexed increase, 52.5, these last two years. And we must spend down on a first-in, first-out basis within three years. To satisfy the terms of the grant, the city will work to spend down a minimum of $50,000 by the end of this fiscal year. West has several categories of eligible projects. Recreational improvements to pathways, parks and trails. Enhancement of fish and wild habitat in riparian areas and public education on wastewater treatment and surface water management.
And I want to, we want to put a pin in this because at the end of our presentation, we want to talk about a potential project that since we have the Parks Board and the City Council here, that, that we would like to move forward on. So we'll just put a pin in the Good Neighbor program for now.
The parking kiosk at Meldrum Bar Park. It was designed and installed in June 2021 to raise revenues from park users, mainly boaters impacting the parking lot, boat ramp and dock who reside outside of city limits. After full costs of design and construction have been realized, the available balance currently, and this is through January 31st of this year, is only $68,376.33. Information is provided to the public each month in the city newsletter about this. With the installment of the parking kiosk, it was anticipated to provide funding towards one-half of a full-time position within Parks Maintenance to improve overall care and maintenance of all city parks. Any additional funds over and above the maintenance worker was going to be earmarked for improvements at the city parks. Funds have not yet been adequate to cover the maintenance worker position, so that was not funded in the 2123 budget, but will be appropriated to do so with the 2325 biennium budget. Needless to say, that will be approved, you know, through the, the budget meetings, et cetera. But we are initially putting it in there. And I missed a slide on there. Here we go. This is the report that is provided to the public each month in the city newsletter, detailing the fees that are raised on a monthly basis per fiscal year, and then also the expenses that have been paid out on the parking kiosk, again, on a fiscal year basis. You can see the contractual services. Those are the fees we have to pay for licensing, et cetera. Credit card fees for use of debit and credit cards at the parking kiosk. Operations and maintenance, and then the initial purchase and installation of the kiosk.
So I see from this that the revenues are somewhat seasonal, obviously higher in the summer months when the park is in greater use. And though, although you mentioned what was a total of 111,000 expenses, 83,000 of that was just initial one-time expense for the purchase of the kiosk.
Yes.
So the other expenditures on an ongoing basis are more or less uniform.
Yes.
And expected to be ongoing. So it's possible then by this to sort of project an approximate ongoing net revenue from this, which would look better than the original figure, the 68,000 figure which you gave us, because that had taken into account this big initial startup cost.
Yes, that's the aggregate total.
Okay.
Today.
All right, very good. Thank you.
It will improve, I'm sure. Grants. The city has received grants in the past, especially for care and maintenance at the Meldrum Bar Dock and River Dredging. The Nature Park Trail Loop is currently in the final rounds for possible approval with the Land and Water Conservation Fund. Grants can be extremely helpful, but do require a significant time commitment in application, construction and overall compliance. Staff must be careful that thoughtful planning goes into seeking these funding sources. And we get into the general fund budgeting itself. Total general, but, excuse me, total general fund information is detailed on the following slides, along with a closer look at the budgeting applied to the Parks Department. This is the revenue pie chart. A little hard to read, but this is the general fund sources of revenues. This details all of them for the current biennium budget for the 2021 to 2023 fiscal year. You'll be seeing these very similar types of pie charts available for when we start with our budget meetings. The park dedicated revenues previously discussed are included in the applicable categories of grants, charges for services and licenses and permits. You don't see them called out strictly park revenues. They are incorporated in these other categories.
Does everybody see where those are on the pie chart? Grants, charges for services and licenses and permits.
And here is the expenditure pie chart. So this illustrates the appropriations for the general fund by each departmental category. And you can see there are quite a few of them. Now, this is a very important point to understand. I even have it embold on my notes here because it is very important. For both revenues and expenditures, these are budgeted numbers based on expectations of revenues to be received to finance the expenditures to be made in support of the department. If revenues fall short, expenditures must be adjusted and reduced to acceptable levels. One of our prime examples of this is the parking kiosk revenue, which we will touch on in a little bit. This is the budget that was excerpted from the adopted budget for the 2021-2023 biennium budget, detailing the previous accomplishments and current budget highlights. And then the second page, also from the adopted budget, provides line item information for a total of seven years. Basically, three, and three biennium budget cycles and then one single fiscal year budget cycle before we went to the biennium. Here's another very important point. Please note that the amount shown in the proposed, approved, adopted budget columns for the 2021-2023, on the last line, it's gonna be to your far right side of that. On the last line under capital outlay, it shows system improvement and projects for $799,276. For seven hundred ninety-nine thousand, two hundred and eighty-five dollars. So I want you to be aware of that number there and where it's located, and this item will be discussed with it with the next report. This is a report I created out of our our um Tyler Finance System. To illustrate exactly the actual activity for the Parks Department only. You'll see that the report shows line item detail for the current budget for twenty-one, twenty-three, twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-three. Then the actual activity for the first fiscal year. Of this biennium, which is twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two, you can see where it says activity there. That is the actual activity of the um uh show of the financial statements that you just recently approved. So those are the audited numbers there. And then the monthly and year-to-date activity for twenty-two, twenty-three through January thirty-one of this year. The next column then shows the total year-to-date activity for the biennium. It just says total activity. That is year-to-date for the biennium, followed by the variance and percent used or received. Revenues that are restricted to park use only that we just previously talked about are followed, or excuse me. Uh that we discussed at the start of the presentation are listed first. So you can see what the total amounts for those specific revenues that are used only for the parks. Then we have following that the expenditures by each category. Being the personal services, the materials and services. And then on the next page, again, you see capital outlay. So on the second page of the report, the final expenditures are listed for capital outlay. Including the amount for system improvements and projects, which has now been adjusted. Through a council-approved budget adjustment down to seven fifty-eight, eight fifty-three. Also, please note that the amount of the subsidy is listed there where you see the note and the arrow. It shows that um the subsidy from the general fund necessary to maintain the Parks Department alone. Is one million, two hundred twenty-eight thousand and ninety-seven dollars as budgeted. These are funds that would be provided from property taxes, franchise taxes, state shared revenues. And other sources of general use, general fund revenues. That are needless to say applicable to all general fund departments. So back to that system and improvements and projects. The breakdown that is shown at the bottom there, system improvements consists of. On what this line item was budgeted for. This is a very critical piece. We've had a lot of questions about this. The land sale carryforward, that was seventy-five thousand that came forward from the previous biennium. That went towards park improvements, and that was a funded amount, definite dollars. The parking revenue estimate was four hundred and forty-nine thousand, two hundred and eighty-five dollars in total. But the only amount that is available at this point in time is that sixty-eight thousand, three hundred and seventy-six dollars. So we have a huge, you know, quite a budget gap, as you can tell, right in there of approximately three hundred and eighty thousand dollars. The Good Neighbor Grant of two hundred thousand dollars that is available for use, fully received and funded. And then the Meldrum Bar Site Plan was seventy-five thousand dollars. That was uh funded out of the general fund revenues and allocated right there and has been, uh we have been spending that. There was the reduction for the budget adjustment that I mentioned that the City Council approved, and that was for. Uh the payment of debt service against the new Public Works Facility. Remember that the Public Works Facility is financed by equal shares from roads, water, sewer, storm. And then a small percentage coming from the Parks Department, all of the departments utilizing that Public Works Facility.
The uh the utility uh departments each share one-fourth of ninety percent of that cost of that building.
Right.
The remaining ten percent is from parks.
Exactly. Yes, sir. So that is what constitutes then that budget amount of seven hundred and fifty-eight thousand. Again, a budgeted number, not necessarily cash in the bank. Okay? So another very important point of these estimates, any funded, received or unspent monies. Will roll into the next biennium, currently at two hundred and ninety-nine thousand and change. For rebudgeting in the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-five biennium. That number may reduce due to any further funds that are spent against this line in. By the end of this fiscal year, or it may hold right about that amount. Yes, sir.
So you say you use the word re-budgeted. Does it go back to the parks? Does it go in a general fund or wherever any you guys wanna put it?
It will go back into that line item for.
Is that, is that the part for the parks?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right.
We um personnel uh appropriations, unspent appropriations, excuse me. Unspent appropriations in personnel or materials and services do not roll over. Those are operating funds that are allocated every single budget period. Systems and improvements are capital outlay, our equipment replacement reserves. Those are very carefully tracked and monitored, and as I say, any unspent real funds that have been received. Will be then rolled over into the next biennium for use. Okay?
So you're saying some don't go back to the parks that they're not used?
Materials and services monies and personnel services monies do not go back to any department. That's, it's a, you know, it's budgeted every biennium.
So if you don't, don't use them, you lose them.
Not.
Oh, I'm trying to.
That is one of those, those uh catchphrases that a lot of people are very comfortable with. Basically, what happens is it goes into the ending fund balance that rolls to start off your next year. We'll, we'll cover a lot of that with the, the budget itself. We have the budgeting one-on-one workshop coming up, so we'll get into that a little more clearly at that.
Okay.
Okay. So anyways, this, as I say, much of this information will be discussed again during the upcoming budget process. So any questions that you have today for me?
I have a question. Um if we go back to the report that is in the newsletter monthly about the kiosks. Um net profits and loss. Do we know why in July of twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, we were at. Almost twenty-eight thousand dollars and then it dropped so significantly in twenty-two, twenty-three? Do we know why that is?
Um it was the cumulative balance of uh as of twenty-one, twenty-two. It was twenty thousand, eight ninety-five was the cumulative balance, total of revenues minus total expenses up to that point. And then in the following fiscal year, uh year-to-date now, we're at sixty-eight thousand. So it hasn't actually dropped. It's increasing slowly.
So I'm looking at July.
Uh huh.
I see twenty-seven thousand, six hundred and eighty-two.
Oh, you're talking about, oh, the months there. Um yes, the July of twenty-one, twenty-two was when. The parking passes first came out. You know, we sold them in June and then July was the first full month.
Okay.
At twenty-seven thousand. So we had a lot of uh annual sales on passes at that time.
Okay.
Uh a significant number were purchased, then it's kind of um evened out.
Okay.
In the following months.
Thank you.
I think it's also important, high level, to talk about the parking fee revenue. When the city first implemented the parking fee. It was based off a study that we had solicited with approximately how much revenue we could generate if we charged a parking fee. For three dollars at Meldrum Bar Park. That is where we came up with the five hundred thousand dollars for the biennium, two hundred and fifty thousand each year. The reason why that has not come to fruition is because. The City Council made a decision that all of the residents in Gladstone should not have to pay for a parking permit. And so rightly so, they all receive an annual pass. So we're only charging to those who do not live in the city of Gladstone. So that really screwed the revenue numbers for us. Because the study that we had prepared was based off, everybody, citizens. That bought it, that came to the park, had to buy a parking pass. And so what we're trying to make sure everybody understands is that there is. Not five hundred thousand dollars in money there available to be spent. And that was part of what the lesson was for tonight is we're just now starting to see. Revenues come in above the expenses on the parking kiosk.
Does that study that was completed break down what the income would be based off of residents, non-residents, different groups coming in? Or was that one global number?
It, there was a breakdown that was contained within that uh study, there's no doubt. But I think it was more the types of user, not necessarily resident versus non-resident. But of the um amount of boaters revenue, the, the people coming in for fishing, that type of thing. Sports user groups. Wasn't it at more that type of?
Yes, it was more tailored towards users than residents versus non-residents. And I still believe that the former City Council decision, and I know the Parks Board was involved with this, was the correct one. Because I think we would have received a lot of pushback from the community if they had to buy a parking pass. They pay property taxes, so a portion of their property tax goes towards parks. So we think it's the correct policy decision. It's just understanding that that revenue in this biennium. Did not happen. We did not hire a full-time position. We have watched our expenditures. And when we go into the next biennium, we will have a more accurate revenue number for the, the parking fee revenues for that.
It will be greatly reduced.
Right.
Yes.
Does that study give us any sort of metric then to measure the existing incomes against?
I don't think it would be. I think it'd be a very apples-to-oranges comparison.
Okay.
Sounds.
And that study is on uh the city's website, under the Parks tab, under Public Works, if you wanted to go through that.
Thank you, Darren. Thank you, Kathy.
All right, so I guess I just wanna understand, you, you, you guess a number and then things happen and you don't hit that number. But you, so I'm just a simple guy, why can't you just go change the number? You know, okay.
Could. We, you know, I could bring a budget reduction resolution to the City Council. Uh detailing exactly what we're doing as far as reducing that number by, say, four hundred thousand dollars for the biennium. And reducing the expenditure offset. We certainly could.
Okay, I just wondered why. Seems like that'd be the simple quickest fix. I mean, I mean.
Well, and Councilor Alexander, your, your questions are common. Because local government budgeting is so different than personal checking accounts. And, and so we appreciate your questions for that. But I think we also wanted to be clear is that we haven't spent the money because we saw that the revenues weren't coming in. If we had hired a Parks worker, we would have to lay them off because we don't have the funds coming in to pay for that position.
And I believe we were hopeful that maybe something would materialize more than than what did.
Just, just wondering.
I have a question about that perks uh maintenance worker. That estimated salary, is that um total compensation? Cause that is quite the pay for a part-time position.
It's a fully loaded amount, including all that, you know, uh taxes and benefits.
Okay.
But it is only a point five FTE.
Okay, thank you.
Now, we invited the Parks Board here tonight. I wonder if any of you have any questions that we haven't covered in what we've been asking here. I wanted to give you an opportunity to not go away feel like uh, you know, you didn't uh get the information you were seeking. Um and, and we, we do wanna go back. We're not done yet because as Jackie hinted, we do, we do wanna look back at. That capital improvements line and possibly, you know, see some action there. Uh are there other questions you came with or uh the things that you're wondering about or that you're still? That it may still be unclear to you tonight or?
I, I will speak for myself. Appreciate Kathy going through that. Oh, sorry. Yeah. This is Bruce Hildreth, Hildreth, uh chair of the Parks Board, Parks Board. Um yeah, so Kathy, thank you for going through this. It would have been really nice to have had a little uh pointer. As we went across the tiny numbers we had here. Cause I'd like to understand better how these columns add up. Um and I, I know it's probably simple math. I wasn't real good in accounting during my business classes. Uh that's why I never went into accounting. Um so I just, I see numbers such as, if I can. Uh if we just go to the back. Um I think it's three, three dash five. Um where you were talking about the original total budget um under the capital outlay. Uh you've, you've got uh two point uh zero-two-two million. Um but then you see revenue less expenditures of one point two. And I see the word revenue less expenditures, so I call that a net number. So I'm just kinda wondering where that number comes from because I would. Add that back up into the original budget amount and call it three point two million.
Okay. It, you remember I was speaking about the general fund revenues that are exclusive only for park use?
Yes.
Okay, in the budget document itself that I referred to at the beginning there and I. At, we excerpted the pages from, that was the budget from uh the budget pages from the adopted budget.
Okay.
This budget report that I, that we show right up here. This is based on actual numbers coming out of our accounting system. And I constructed it to show those revenues that are exclusive to the park on the top there. And then took away the same amount, the expenditures that are all listed within the budget and show on the budget document. Shy of that uh forty thousand that is the um uh um budget adjustment that was made. And that's where I come up with the one point two. This was trying to show you what the net subsidy. Of the Parks Department is by the overall general fund budget. You have these, these revenues that support the Parks Department. You have those uh specific expenses, and then there's a subsidy necessary, one point two million. From the rest of the general fund revenues.
Okay, this is probably why I didn't go into accounting. Love to come and have a cup of coffee with you and.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Show me.
Yes, I'd be happy to, as far as correlating this back to the actual budget document itself.
Okay. Yeah, I, I would just um again. Um I, I, I think I need more time with the budget to be asking all my questions because I don't wanna ask a bunch of dumb questions. Um I'd like to ask some good questions, um such as the CDC. Um there's the fees and then there's the reimbursement fee, which I don't understand what the reimbursement fee is. It's, it's small. Uh three hundred ninety-two hundred dollars. Um but um the CDC. Budget seemed to have shown, and I just jotted it down because you said it, it was uh, it was a larger number, maybe.
We don't even budget for SDC fees.
SDC.
That's what you're seeing here is the park SDCs. There is no budget for those. Our growth rate is so small here in Gladstone that if we receive any SDC fees that are just recorded as income. And uh as I say, we don't show budget in the Parks Department for it.
Oh, I thought I actually wrote down that there was a certain amount that came in.
Um there is a certain amount that came in. The um, these numbers are very small. The um uh for this uh current biennium, it is. Uh three thousand some, under four thousand dollars.
Under four.
That has been received. The turn, the uh SDC fees are restricted revenues. So if they are not spent, they are um accumulated from year to year to year. And that is where the number of the two hundred and some odd thousand comes from. So that has been, how much has been brought in, in SDC revenues and not spent, not used. Um uh on any type of project since the inception of them in twenty seventeen, eighteen.
Okay, so there is money there.
Mm-hmm, in the SDCs, yes.
Yeah, all right.
But remember, we budget on a biennium. But remember we budget on a biennium basis. The most we're only looking at a two-year snapshot.
Okay.
So things that happened before that accumulate into fund balance. But they do not reflect in the budget itself, in the current budget that we're working.
I, I'd just like to go on record and bring, bring this up that when the Parks, uh, committee is meeting and trying to determine what type of improvements should be made in the park. And then we don't see the numbers. Uh, or it's money that's there, but it's really, we don't show it. And then therefore we can't make recommendations as to how to spend that for improvements. Um, and Wes' Good Neighbor Fund is a good one. There's two hundred thousand dollars that I know is restricted. It can't be used everywhere, but it can be used in some of the parks.
Yes. And we have been providing, uh, updates on a periodic basis to the Parks Board as far as these restricted funds that are available that accumulate over a period of time.
Okay. All right. Well, I, those were my questions is want to see those and I want to know how the Parks Board can make recommendations to the council in spending some of those dollars to make improvements that are reasonable, significant, or even just that looks a lot nicer now, you know?
Well, uh, Administrator Betts, you alluded that you had, uh, maybe a recommendation along those lines. Would you, would you like to? Is this a good time to sort of introduce that idea?
I, I think it is. And, and also Bruce, I think as, as Chair, one of the items that yes, the Parks Board should look at is, okay, now you know, we have a balance of two hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars from system development charges. The Parks Master Plan identifies projects that you can use for that. That would be something that in a future meeting with, uh, Darren, that you would put on the agenda to discuss as a Parks Board to make a recommendation for that. Um, the other one is we appreciate the work that the Parks Board has done the last five years. You've done an incredible amount of work updating our plans and getting us ready to this point now where, how much money do we have to work on projects? One of the, uh, proposals that Darren and Kathy and I wanted to present to the city council is that we agree that the community should see a benefit at Meldrum Bar Park. Maybe not from the revenue that we've generated from the parking fee, but also because we received some American Rescue Plan Act funds that we would like to leverage with some money from the Good Neighbor Program to complete, uh, playground replacement project at Meldrum Bar Park. In the site plan that was just completed, it identified a couple hundred thousand dollars to completely overhaul the playground furniture at Meldrum Bar Park. We think that would be an excellent project for the Parks Board and the city council to say, yes, staff, go forward. Use American Rescue Dollar Funds and fifty thousand dollars of that Good Neighbor Program funds. Order the playground equipment and put it in out there for the community. That's another example that if the council gave me head nods, then we would look to adding that to the Parks Board agenda so that you could help us decide perhaps what kind of playground equipment that we should purchase out there. So we're hoping that that is something that you would be interested in because we think that we should be having a tangible, visible project in the community in regards to our parks. And Meldrum Bar Park is where we believe this money should be spent.
Partly because, uh, the, the parking fee is so associated with that facility. That's, that's one reason why it could be, uh, viewed more favorably by the public if the money that, um, the people in the community, the wider community have spent on parking there actually benefits that park. Uh, also, uh, Council Alexander used the term use it or lose it. With the fifty thousand dollar grant, the Good Neighbor money, that literally is the case. We have a portion of that money has to be spent by June thirtieth of this year or it is lost. Uh, so that's another reason to, to, to be aware of whatever strings are attached and and designations are associated with these various funds that we have.
And we reached out to Wes who provides that funding and they were very excited at partnering with the City of Gladstone for a project such as that. So we know that they would support doing that. But, but yes, that, those are the things, the political will, we believe of the elected officials and the advisory board. Uh, we would support moving forward to try to make that type of project happen within the next six months, quite frankly.
Is that, excuse me, is that fifty thousand dollars by the end of the fiscal year? Does that have to be spent or does that have to, just have to have intent to spend?
The stipulation is, is that it will be spent at the end of three years. However, if we have a viable plan in place. I'm sure we would be able to get understanding on if it does roll over into the following fiscal year or something such as that. The money isn't going to go away. They want us to use that.
Right.
So, but I.
They want us to use it on their timeline, but.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
And I know that Counselor Garlington is, is not here tonight, but that as part of the former council, when we were talking about American Rescue Plan dollars, she was a proponent of let's some, let's do something big and visible for the community to benefit for that. And, and we're at a point where we think we're ready to do it. We think the Parks Board would support that. Um, Darren, you might want to talk a little bit about who you might bring in as a vendor to help them work through those options.
Um, well, there's multiple vendors out there obviously that can do this type of, of, of project. Um, they basically, they would come in, um, give us an idea of what we can put in the space that's available there. Um, and then do up renderings for multiple types of playgrounds, different layouts, that type of a thing. Um, what I see happening with that is those would then go to Parks Board for them to narrow that down. And then from there, take it out to the public and have the public decide, you know, vote on which one they would like to have. And then take that back to the Parks Board, have them have the ultimate decision and then take that forward to council for approval.
I have a question. The updated playground equipment is, that's something you guys would support?
I actually have an update for that at Parks Board, so.
Excuse me. Um, are those ARPA funds and the West funds independent of that two hundred and eighty-nine thousand? Or will some of that?
Fifty thousand would come from the Good Neighbor Program. The ARPA funds are separate. We, the city has committed over half of the two point four million dollars. But we do feel like there are sufficient funds there to allocate to this.
Okay. Thank you.
I have one more question too. I mean, since we've got the Parks Board here. So I, I know in the past we've looked into, I mean, we want to get anything we can, like playground equipment, everything. But I know you guys at one point, not too long ago, were looking at one of them covered structures with the, with the, the tables and so forth, weren't you? But it was going to be so much money to build. Is that something? I mean, do you guys have priorities? I guess my question is. Uh, covered structures with the barbecues, uh, playground equipment, you know, I mean, do you, do you guys talk about that? The Parks Bars are, is there priorities on what you'd like to have or see done at the parks? Do you got a list of like priorities?
We've made lists, yeah, uh, Greg, and, um, we, we have some priorities. Uh, we've kicked some things around. Um, where we ended up was deciding what kinds of garbage cans, benches, um, tables we want. Um, to date, we haven't placed any of those new items, um, including just garbage cans. And this is why I'm asking about capital improvement projects, such as what you're talking about. I'm pleased to hear that the parking fee structure, you know, the, the kiosk, which was a, an item that we worked on pretty hard for a couple of years in order to provide some funds for capital improvement. So when I hear FTE being hired, makes me want to go back and look through all my notes to say, no, pretty sure it was capital improvement, not FTE. You know, so now that we have a project that is maybe going to look at using those funds, I think you're going to have the backing of the Park Board on this, um, and willingness to, to, to work on that. Uh, and any way that you're asking us to do that, we'll, we'll do it. You know, I think we just want to see movement. And when we're looking at June thirtieth of this year, the potential to lose fifty thousand dollars has been sitting there for four years. I mean, how fast can we move?
Well, and let me just clarify with you a little further. Um, so I listened to your last Parks Board meeting. There was discussion of sort of, um, perhaps incrementally a little at a time, but, uh, across the board improvements. New benches, new trash cans, things that all the parks need improvement in. Or, you know, improving one at one park and taking a pretty fair, good condition bench that you're replacing and moving it to another park that has a really poor condition bench. There you would see kind of a little bit of improvement everywhere. This option being discussed tonight is more of a major improvement on one site. But, you know, with the potential of, you know, looking forward to the future of doing the, some of the other.
I agree with that.
So, so you think that, that a major improvement in one site would, uh, have the support, uh, of the community? Uh, as, as you read it.
I, I, I believe so. I've used Meldrum. I've taken my grandkids down there.
Yeah.
To, to that part. It's not the favorite one, but we've gone down there because we've been there. And because it is a larger park and gets used quite a bit, um, it probably deserves something along the lines of what Max Patterson has. Well, um, that Max Patterson, as you know, gets used an awful lot. I'm sure you've taken your grandkids there.
Yes, yes, I have.
Um, so, yeah, I don't think there's a problem with, uh, our current Park Board members and our two new ones, uh, to agree upon, um, uh, a, a plan of some sort, you know, especially if the funds are going to be available.
Well, I'd like to ask, uh, Counselor Riechel, do you have any questions? Do you weigh in on this at all?
Um, well, excuse me, I've got a little bit of a dry throat. Um, I think that this is a, a potential thing that could really be beneficial. I know from personal experience, much like Bruce, the kids. Meldrum Park is not their first pick for the playground, but they will use it. And it would be, it would be nice to see, um, continued improvement down there. So I make, I'm, I would also like to say to the Parks Board, I appreciate that you're there tonight and I'm sorry that I'm not there in person with you. Um, but I do really look forward to working with you as your liaison and I think that this has a potential to kind of kickstart some of that inspiration for the community. So that's kind of where I'm sitting with this right now.
Thanks Veronica. Nice to see you too. It's been a while.
I know. It's nice to see you too, Bruce.
All right. Are there other questions from counselors on this recommendation? Okay. Counselor Alexander, go ahead.
So when I get on this one page, it says City of Gladstone Parks. And I start going down. I just don't understand. So if you just, it says, um, Personnel Services. So, uh, oh, um, second to the last. You know, I'm just, because I don't know and I'm, I'm just trying to figure it out. So it says City of Gladstone Parks Department. And under there it says Personnel Services. Director, Supervisor, Manager, Assistant, Journey, Utility Work. All that is paid out of a Parks Fund? Or is that a Public Works Fund?
This is the Parks Fund.
So, so all those people get paid out of the money that's for the parks?
Yes.
But this, those funds don't represent the entire salaries of those people. This is the portion of their work to which goes to parks. That is paid for by parks. Yeah. Well, it's a very good question because this is the kind of question that the public who looks at a budget like this will want to ask. Uh, and so, um, that's why we're up here to think in terms of how the public would think about these things and it's, that's very useful.
Absolutely. We allocate out most of the, uh, Public Works Management positions, especially as far as the Director, Supervisors, uh, et cetera, amongst all five of the Public Works Departments being Parks, Roads, Water, Sewer and Storm.
So Darren wears five different hats and each one has a different salary in the budget.
Yes, yes.
Very good. Now, this is not an item we can take action on tonight. This is just a work session. You provided us with a recommendation. Uh, is it possible for you to bring something forward to us then at a future meeting for where we could take some action?
Yeah, I think, uh, I think we have enough synergy around what we propose that this will probably go on the Parks Agenda for their next meeting. And then when it comes to a point where the city council needs to make a decision, we will, we will bring it to you as well. So I think it's very exciting and I think the community deserves it. And we just all agree that this would be a really good collaboration for the city.
Well, and I think it's been helpful tonight in the process to understand tho- those caveats that, uh, that Kathy made a little earlier. Uh, when you look at a, an expense, expenditure line item in a budget, sometimes we talk about it as though it's a bucket of money which is currently there, which is going to run out at the end of the year and we have it there. We need to spend it soon. And it isn't. It's an estimate of what we thought we might be able to spend there if all the revenues that we had also projected had come in. It's never really money in an account that's, that's there. But by breaking it down the way you did tonight, you gave us some actual figures, some actual revenues that are on hand. Uh, and an actual proportional share of general fund revenue that's associated with this department to enable us to have a clear figure of how much of a budget we have for a capital improvement of this kind. So I'm grateful for that education. Uh, I'm, I'm sorry to the Parks Board for the fact and, and to all the other advisory boards in the city, to the extent that they have some capital improvement items in their budget. But it's not always real clear to see just from the budget document. But I, I think by coming together tonight, we've reached a better understanding of this. And I'm grateful to staff uh, for considering it, for teaching us and for making this recommendation. So I look forward to future action on this item. Thank you all for coming tonight. Is there anything else on, on this item or, uh, I don't have anything else on the agenda? Um, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I'll second.
It has been moved by Counselor Huckabee, seconded by Counselor Alexander. Uh, Tammy, will you call the roll, please?
Counselor Roberts.
Yes.
Counselor Riechel.
Yes.
Counselor Alexander.
Yes.
Counselor Huckabee.
Yes.
Mayor Milch.
Yes, we are adjourned at seven twenty PM. Thank you all for coming.